I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. The first item is a moment of silence and then I would ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge. We all rise?
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Well, and then the next item on our agenda is presentations regarding the 35th Annual Bruman and Blumen event.
I think we've got a resolution. Yep, we've got a resolution to present.
So let's head on down.
.......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Sure, yes.
Any volunteers that participate, you're welcome to come up and join in this process.
Two.
I'll be the volunteer.
Yeah, say hello.
Representatives of all the years.
They meet.
It was balanced.
Sounds good.
Exactly.
Oh, just waiting to see what's doing. Sorry. Thank you.
Stand in for the urge.
The next item on our agenda is a presentation regarding the Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Airport and Michael St. Jean is the executive director will provide us an update on the airport.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you. Mr. Meadows, thank you.
See ya.
And I'd like to start off by saying congratulations, Coach. My daughter used to play ball, Coach.
I've been a long time.
And speaking of a long time ago, I'd like to point out that Mr. Biggs also was part of the formation of the Airport Authority prior to its formation in 2002. So Mr. Biggs has been integrated into this system for many, many years and worked with Ms. Perkins and knows all the ins and outs. Some of you I know, some of you I don't. So I'll get right to it. The difference in my presentation tonight is completely different than the presentation that I've put in the past because we've done stuff, which is a major change. Come on. Come on. I'd like to start with the Airport Authority and its creation. And the Airport Authority is legislated by the Virginia Legislature in 2002. The acts of the authority, it's made up of Montgomery County, Christiansburg, Blacksburg, and Virginia Tech. I need to keep this out. I always start the presentation off with this particular screen because what is the mission of the Airport Authority? Why are we here? And in the yellow, it really emphasizes the point, the mission of servicing corporate executive markets, obtaining grants, loans, and in promoting and assisting in regional economic development. I'd like to point out that the airport is a tool for economic development. Not only is it a place for imports, input, import and export of ideas, but it is a place where people come to this region. It is the front door to Montgomery County. We also have a vision statement and read through. But it's a community that we're proud of that recognizes the economic value it brings to this particular area. I think some of you have seen us many times. Again, I go back to being an economic tool. One of the things that we need to do is how do we create the second on the tool and one of those ways was infrastructure. We needed to build a runway, we needed to build services, we need to clear out areas for safety. And one of the critical components here is a cultural change from 2002. This airport was considered a rural airport with limited services, serving solely Virginia Tech. That was an accurate statement. And as time has gone along, trying to enhance a culture change from employees, the internal customers of the community to include Montgomery County and the perception of that, but also going outside the area and changing what the culture is in this airport. About two years ago, one of my board members made a comment that the airport has changed, but it still has the processes of a fond college. And so as we continue to evolve and that culture changes, that is bringing a different perspective on Montgomery County, Christiansburg, Blacksburg, and Virginia Tech. We do strategic planning, but our strategic planning is there are some organizations that do a nice strategic plan and when they finish, they put it up on the shelf. We do not do this. We implement a master plan update. We implement our economic development processes. We do our business planning, which we do every two years. It gets a little fuzzy after two years, so we continue to evolve. I do a budget, as Ms. Biggs attributed twice a year. So we do what is projected and then we reevaluate it halfway through. What is our brand? What was the brand before? We've been discussing this a lot in our board meetings this last year. Who do we want to be? Do we want to be a rural recognized airport or do we want to be, and it's been brought to our attention, do we want to be the cup of coffee that we get from Sheetz? Or do we want to be the Starbucks? And so if we want to be the Starbucks, this is what we bring to the community. And so we're entirely present here of being a Starbucks. Services, well, we can get a, we can have a runway, but if we don't have good fuel services, if we don't have maintenance services, if we don't have charter aircraft, if we don't have services for the corporate aircraft, but also for the grassroots aviation such as flight school, these are critical components of running in any airport. Here are the resources. Hiring the right people and putting the right people in the right position. And I think that's a critical component to success any particular business out there. We don't want someone who's in a grumpy mood all the time meeting our customers. Sometimes that's A. And then we have synergies that we work with corporate research center. We've worked with the big box retailers. We work with the town of Blacksburg, Virginia Tech. And we try to enhance or integrate all of the systems together so that we have a broad spectrum of reaching nationally as well as regionally. We are the other main street. We are the main street of coming into this community. We are I-81. I'm going to go over briefly beginning, present, and future. I've already discussed the cultural changes we've moved forward from 2002 to now. Infrastructure rehabilitation, I'll go over briefly. Land acquisition, which was a popular thing back in 2002, 2006, and planning for the future. Past projects, I'll go through these briefly. The runway protection zone, we had to acquire a number of businesses as well as some homes in the runway protection zone. That's a safety. Why somebody built a gas station at the end of the runway? I have no idea, but we took care of it. Apron rehabilitation, the infrastructure at the airport was decaying rapidly, so we had to spend a lot of money to update the apron and expansion. Runway rehabilitation, we actually elevated the runway five feet in the middle. The runway and the concrete, the powder of the concrete will continue to cure for another 30 years. So as it gets older, it will get stronger. An environmental assessment, which is normally an 18-month process, took us six years. A few things. Airport layout plan updates, miscellaneous improvement. Anyways, the cost of this is almost 17, a little over $17 million of federal and state money. Now, let me clarify a point right now. When I talk about airport improvement money, it doesn't come from the general fund of the United States. It comes from a dedicated transportation trust fund. So it comes from taxes on aviation fuel, it comes on freight and railway bill, it comes on postal, it comes on other taxes within the aviation system. So if you're not using the aviation system, you're not investing in the system. So that's a critical point that I'd like to point out. That's both federal and state. Present, we purchased, we acquired 25 acres of fee, another 15 acres in easement, so we could extend the runway. We could not extend the runway without ownership of the property. And this is based upon future grants. We haven't even received the money yet and the payback could be two years from now, three years from now, five years from now. So we've worked very closely with our, with the groups of the hangar projects. Right now, if you've gone by the airport, you've seen a couple of corporate hangars that are up. We also have some new T-hangers that we've already broken ground on and they're about to go up to. And maintenance projects. Key to this is $33.4 million. So we add the two together, we're over $50 million. So for every dollar that the community has invested in the last 16 years, we've leveraged that amount, $18.50 for every dollar the community has put in there. That's a good return on investment. Excuse me. Future one. We continue to have culture change. We want to be known as, and I'm going to say top tier airports in the Commonwealth. We want to be known as the Manassas. We want to be known as the Chesapeake. And right now, when we go to different functions throughout the state, Virginia Tech, Montgomery County Regional Airport is spoken with in the same voice and the same sentence as those particular airports. And that's attributed to the community that supports us. We continue to brand us, I've discussed that. We will enhance infrastructure. We will enhance service. SASSO is a specialized and out of a service provider. Those are people who put out fueling. But we're going to keep the fuel, we need the money, the flight schools and things such as that. We have done a business plan and with the longer runway, we will have a 40% increase in corporate jet traffic. And the bottom line is that jet fuel comes right back into the Airport Authority. Now, will the airport ever wean itself completely off the dollar of the county or the other supporting entities? Probably not, but we're getting closer. And that's the key component here. There's the old runway. You can see it's pretty beat up. It's a pretty view. Right here is where the airport terminal is. This is where the old hokey hangar is. This is where the new hokey hangar is. By the way, they pay fair market value for the land that they lease even though it's their land. So we, everybody pays fairly across this spectrum. This is the new hangar that Sheila Development has built. This next group is first right of refusal. That's soon to come under construction. And we have 12 new T-hangers. And if you'll notice, from the runway that's currently from here to here, we will shift it to the west and it will begin here and go out to here. And here's your new road, the new interchange. Any questions on that? Now, currently, the airport is able to support the aircraft on the left and we're not supposed to be able to support the aircraft on the right. Now, let me go forward. That's the aircraft on the right. That is the type of aircraft, and I called them the C-suite executives. These are the people who are coming in here with 500, 1,000 jobs, who will be buying cars, who will be buying homes, excuse my cars, my access. Will be buying insurance and gasoline and all the other services. And this is the driver of what the airport's all about. Now, in this particular case, that's not true. This is the chief naval officer for the US Navy when he came in from Dr. Stevens' funeral. But this is the type of aircraft we will attract. Now, I will go back to the other screen. This is old Research Center Drive and this is south of the runway looking towards the stadium. This is the new Research Center Drive as it swings around. Here's a view of a roundabout on a bicycle trail and the bridge in the background. I just find that amusing, I don't know why. Again, here is stadium in this area here. This is the final grade of the new runway. And I couldn't help myself. For someone who just comes into the community and they see the sign coming off the roundabout, I just couldn't. Now, the next one's even better. So I looked this up, Egyptian hieroglyphics, and it's the eye of horse. It's the Egyptian symbol of protection. And if you turn it this way, it is really, really close to what that is. So that's a wayfinding sign in Blacksburg.
I'll start off with Supervisor King. Any questions?
No questions.
Supervisor Pichakowski?
No, no questions, thank you.
Supervisor Demont?
I don't have any questions either. I really do appreciate you coming out. I know when we ran into you in Richmond in the General Assembly, you had mentioned that you wanted to come talk to us, so I've been eager to hear from you. Thanks so much for being here.
Supervisor Biggs?
I don't have any questions. I'm glad to be reconnected to the airport and I'm glad to be working with Michael. He is living the airport. That's his whole life. And he has a plan in mind and he sees it in his head and he's able to translate it to the members. So just keep on doing what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions. Oops, sorry.
Supervisor Demont?
What's a T-hanger?
A T-hanger is a small hangar for small single engine aircraft or small twin engine aircraft. They're about 1,500 square feet.
So it'd be one plane per T-hanger?
Correct. Now, the bigger hangars that you saw, they're able to store four, five corporate jets. And when we have four more corporate jets, we'll have a break even analysis. That's the goal. And then the county gets the personal property tax on that too.
I was surprised to see the Sheeler logo on the side of the hangar. And so is that just corporate, not goodwill, I don't know, corporate sponsorship for the hangar? Or how, what is that relationship?
I don't think I quite understand your question, what the relationship is. They can advertise and they're trying to, could you rephrase that?
So they gave you a bunch of money so that they could have their logo up there, but that money specifically was given to build that hangar? Or to, you know, you're going to have a new terminal or, you know, how, what is that?
Good question. Actually, Sheeler owns the hangar, but they pay fair market value land lease for the airport and access to the runway. So if you might attest to this, the property on Oceanfront is much of a higher value than back on Atlantic Avenue. And so this is oceanfront property, so the value of that property is extremely important to the Airport Authority. Now, we also invest, the state gives the Airport Authority an 80/20 grant for site development infrastructure. They're also paying our 20% on that. And that's over a 30-year lease agreement that we have with that. So that's the relationship. So they're a business and that's their lease agreement.
So they house their planes in there?
Yes.
And would they be able to lease to other companies?
Yes.
I see. So other companies can own the big hangars also? And is that the goal, is to just, hey, let's see how many of these big hangars we can have?
Absolutely. And that's the economic driver. So when we start putting in the little jets or the bigger jets, they're the ones that are paying rent, but they're also purchasing fuel, they're also bringing the primary, secondary, and induced economic impact to the community. So the synergies there are very, very close. If you look like a Manassas or Leesburg, you have the alphabet, people up there, the FBI, the CIA. And I believe, was it Mr. Meadows Concord Airport that you were familiar with? Where you have a lot of stock car racing.
A lot of ass car teams based there.
So that's how we generate revenue, by leasing our most valuable asset, which is the property.
So a personal district question. So I'm District A, which means South Main Street, which means you've cleared up all that property off of Main Street up to the runway. But it looks like you're going to be demolishing some part of the runway. And what are you going to put there?
Grass.
Instead of brush.
Yeah. And we don't want to create an environment that becomes a habitat for wildlife, particularly deer.
Or homeless people sometimes.
I've never seen.
This was five, 10 years ago, yep.
Deer tend to get in the way of the planes occasionally.
Yeah, and they, jet engines and deer just do not match. If we go.
The red, yep.
This currently is the existing end of the runway. This entire area in red is going to be demolished. So what we will have is a standard 5,500-foot runway for the bigger jet. And then on either end, we will have a 1,000-foot runway safety area, which is the standard. So by demolishing this section, and particularly in your neighborhood, we are literally, in fact, moving the runway away from the seat of home neighborhood. So we'll have higher crossing height, but in case of a undershoot or an overshoot, either coming in over South Main Street or the other way, we'll have at least some basis for safety that the people will be protected versus having a gas station at the runway 300 feet away.
So where that gas station used to be is in the green little highlighted lines. Does that mean that a gas station can go back there because you're moving it? Okay.
No, ma'am, that is.
Any other business go there?
No, ma'am, that is free and clear of any congregation of people. You can have a road through there currently like South Main Street and Research Center Drive on the other end in the Huckleberry. But the new standards that are coming out with the Federal Aviation Administration will not even allow roads in the protection zone.
That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for everything that you've done. I mean, since you've been here, it's like night and day, the whole airport, so it's amazing. Thank you for that.
That's my board.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for coming by.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other questions except for when are you planning to tear down the old hangar?
Late fall, early winter.
The only reason is my grandfather is part of one of the, at least what I've been told is part of the WPA projects.
Yes.
Laid the block. That's how, and for part of that. And so I was just curious. I knew it needed to come down, but it's, so.
The doors came from a World War I hangar out of North Carolina, so the doors were made in 1919. But the life of the hokey hangar will continue. I've been working with the Virginia Historical Society and Aviation and they're now having a new hangar being built up in Stafford. And they're going to be coming down and taking the doors and a lot of the steel, so it will be resurrected as a hokey hangar somewhere else.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. I don't believe that anyone signed up, but you do not have to have signed up to address the Board of Supervisors in regards to the public hearing. Specifically, the following public hearing was advertised in the New River section of the Runway Times on May the 12th and again on May the 20th, 2018. It is for a proposed conveyance of a 15-foot right-of-way in easement to Appalachian Power Company on the Kipps Elementary School property. The request is by Apco for a 15-foot right-of-way in easement to locate an underground power line on the Kipps Elementary School property in order to improve reliability of service in the area. Again, there was no one signed up, but if anyone would like to address the board on this issue, you may come forward. You'll have five minutes. Please state your name. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing. The next item on our agenda is a public address. This is the opportunity for the Board of Supervisors to listen to what citizens' concerns. I don't believe there's anyone signed up, but anyone who would like to address the board on any issue can come forward, state your name and address, and you would have five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward for public address, our next item on our agenda is addendum. And I don't believe that there is a gen- addendum, excuse me. Is there a motion in regards to consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Pichakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demont?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Ben?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Set eyes.
Is there a motion to go into work session?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Pichakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demont?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Ben?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Set eyes.
The first item in the work session is recent regional hazardous mitigation plan.
Mr. Chair, we have with us this evening Kristi Stripe, who's a regional planner with the NRV Regional Commission. He's going to provide us with an update on the NRV Hazard Mitigation Plan for the update for 2017. Kristi, thank you for being here tonight.
Well, thank you all for inviting me. I appreciate you making some time for us to give you an update on that process. I'm going to go in here and pull up my presentation. All right, here we go. The hazard mitigation planning took place over 18 months over the past year, 2016, 2017, and has been approved by FEMA, so we're in good shape. Before I get too far into the presentation, I like to define hazard mitigation, just so we're all on the same page about what that is. I like to make sure that it's differentiated from recovery, preparedness, and response. Those deal with a specific event and mitigation deals with future events to minimize and avoid the impacts to property and people. So hazard mitigation is a sustainable action that will reduce or eliminate injury to citizens, damages to structures, and will allow continuity of critical society functions. I talk about the plan as an opportunity to create outcomes and opportunities for projects in the community to build resilience, but it's also an opportunity for collaboration and partnering among the states. and partnering among stakeholders. Every five years, we do this plan renewal, and that gives everyone in the region a chance to come together and talk about emergency management and mitigation, and what can we do to make our community safer? And that buzzword that people like to pull out, resilient, but in fact, it really does apply. It's a very good word to use here because it helps us bounce back, it helps us recover more quickly, and be prepared for the next one that comes around. And when I say collaboration and partnering, I throw this up just so you can see the icons. It really is, at a minimum, this many folks participating. It's the localities, it's the universities participating, and our funders, FEMA, and Virginia Department of Emergency Management, as well as some resources that are kind of unique for us around here. I think that they're unique. And my example is the National Weather Service. They have a regional office here in Blacksburg, and this is my second time doing the plan, and it's their third time. They've been at it longer than I have, being a part of this process, and they're just an incredibly valuable resource, not in terms of weather forecasters, but that wealth of data and expertise they bring to understanding weather and what the hazards are in our area. So I like to recognize them and talk to you about these groups. And all of these people participate in different ways. We have a steering committee that so many of them are part of, working groups who study the hazards and help us work through the data and identify those mitigation opportunities. And when I talk about the mitigation opportunities, I'm gonna go into this more, but it really is about education, regional cooperation, capital improvement projects at the local level, and the development and planning guidelines on the policy side. So here's what I call the money shot. The 217 hazard rankings, we do this every time. We do a collective analysis of the data, and then we go in and we develop a matrix of what are our real risks. Not surprisingly, our high ones are freezing temperatures, high winds, and flooding. Those outrank the others far and away. The medium are, you know, come second in that, and then low, we've got these five I list here. Wildfires underlined, because that's the only change that we saw between 2011 and 2017. It bumped up solidly in improving with those medium risks, and I think that's due in part to the fact that we are experiencing more wildfire risk, and we see that reflected in the data over time. But there's also more awareness of wildfire as a risk. Because when we were working on this, November of 2016, we saw local wildfires in Giles and Plaskett Counties, but also this was one of the ones down near Pigeon Forge happened in Tennessee. So when you see that out in the media and hear your colleagues talking about it, you're more aware of what's out there than you might be on other issues. And then, to summarize the process, as I mentioned, we worked with the steering committee, working groups, and part of the task was this vulnerability and risk assessment, which is kind of the crux of identifying what our hazards are, what's vulnerable to those hazards, and what's the extent of the risk that we're seeing in the community. And I put mapping up there because it's the GIA's aspect, this is so important to identifying that information. And if you pull up our plan, and we've got a website for that that stays up continuously, we update it as we work on it through the process, but then all of that information remains until the next update replaces the current data. But we had 57 maps of data, and that was the high-level data that we were looking at. Then there were tables and different figures that also get included in this. So it's a very intensive effort, and that the steering committee and working groups hang in there and work through that information with us is really a tribute to the regionalism we see and here in the commitment to this topic. Local mitigation, as I mentioned, it is a regional plan. We do talk about regional mitigation opportunities, but given that it's a FEMA requirement for every locality to have this plan to be eligible for funding, we drill down in and make sure we're identifying the risks in each locality and identifying opportunities for mitigation. We also like to see where we've been, to document what's been accomplished and what's going on now, as well as the future. We identify any additional risk for localities when it exists. I will say it doesn't exist in Montgomery County. So the example I would give you, since it isn't here on, is Floyd County is far more susceptible to drought than any other locality in the region, and so we would dig in deeper to the data to help assess that risk for them. And the plan serves as a record of the planning efforts and policies that we've identified that can further mitigation and protection in the community. So mitigation projects are regional and local, and this is where Montgomery County is in terms of local projects. These are the potentials. I'm not gonna read the list because this is page one of the list, but I will say again that adopting this plan makes the county eligible for FEMA grant funds, and with this group and this group, that's a lot of opportunity to get some work done as that matching fund becomes available locally to go out and seek it through FEMA. Excuse me. So that's what's potential. And I also like to go back and let you all know what's been accomplished, where are we coming from, what are we building on? And it's these projects, the Swift Water Rescue Capacity, that's a regional group that's up and running. Identification and Study of Village Flood Plains, that's something that's happened within your planning department. And then there's some additional ones that's ready as well, including the Storm Ready Community. And as you've probably noticed, the bulk of what I've shown you here is flooding, but it's not only flooding, it's also geologic hazards and drought that these projects will seek to address and have addressed. And that's the details I have for you today. And again, the website that I mentioned is at this link, and you can go and find all of the meeting details, all the data we've looked at, and then the plan itself, and all those chapters that are in there you'll find at the ready. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may all may have.
I'll start off with Supervisor Fajakowski.
I don't have any specific questions, but thank you for all your work on this.
Supervisor Demox?
I'm sure you're familiar with the Ellicott City flooding over the weekend. And so I read, I was interested, I have always kind of had an interest in natural disasters, kind of a geeky interest. So I was reading some feedback and some meteorological meteor information, and a lot of people were attributing some of the flooding that they were seeing, this being the second thousand-year flood in as many years, to possibly development upstream or uphill. Does your, I guess, how much does that get looked at as part of this hazard mitigation planned?
It gets looked at in the sense that FEMA is the agency that maintains those flood maps that tell you where the flood zones are, and that's the data we use. The hitch in that is they don't update them every year, and not being knowledgeable on the science side of it, I'm not sure what the formulas are and how they calculate if that flood profile changes significantly. It is true that development has an impact, but it's not something that we have a capacity to measure in the resources we use for the plan.
Okay. And I know we have an MS4, as do the two towns, for storm water management. Does that factor into this planning at all? Well, I know, for example, like if you're developing an apartment community in Blacksburg, then you have to put in significant infrastructure for storm water management. I guess I'm just interested in how do those two things work together, storm water management, flooding, and the hazard mitigation plan? Or there might not even be an answer to that?
Yeah, I honestly don't know. I do know that development regulations, when somebody does submit a plan for review, every locality has flood plain regulations, and Montgomery County has worked those into their development process too. So I know whatever the latest date is, that's what they work with, what they have access to. I don't know how it relates to MS4. And in terms of storm water management, if it's not in the flood plain, it's gonna be a localized flooding issue, but I don't, again, I don't know enough to give you a good answer about the impacts of...
Thank you. And are your maps online? Are they on your website? All the maps?
Some of them are. Everything's available as a PDF, but in terms of the FEMA flood map, I think that we've got that on there, and we've got karst and things like that as well.
Yeah, I'm gonna look at that just because I, again, kind of think that that's interesting, and we'll geek out on that, so...
Supervisor Biggs?
Just thank you for everything you do, and this is just one aspect of your many jobs.
Yes, you do. Supervisor Bunn?
I have a couple of questions. So what is human-caused?
That is, the most simple explanation is it's versus natural, so it's caused by people. It's not caused by environmental effects.
What's an example of that?
The shortlist would be terrorism, pandemics, chemical spills, even things like that are counted as human cause rather than natural, but anything that comes out of human activity versus natural activity.
And on your slides eight and nine and 10, you have karst there. Do you, is there any reason to, let me, okay. So you have karst. Is there any reason why you don't have sinkholes and springs, or caves, or things like that?
Those are all symptomatic of karst geology, because the karst is a limestone strata of rock. It's susceptible to the impacts of rain, so it just comes in and eats away and creates things like sinkholes and caves, and it doesn't create springs. In fact, it can impact springs. So those are illustrations of what karst is, when you ask about sinkholes and caves.
So what does that look like? You had on your slide, it looks like slide eight, that you had expand current karst mapping. What does that look like? For example, in our conference room back here, on the wall, it has a map, and it shows all the caves and, I think, sinkholes. I don't know exactly.
Karst.
You know, there's quite a bit. Is that the kind of map you're talking about?
It can be, and we keep the project broad to see what, so that when something's available, we can be opportunistic about how much detail we get into or not. It does include mapping known sinkholes. It also means taking geology maps and identifying where that kind of geology is that's likely to create the sinkholes, and then kind of overlaying known sinkholes and topography, but sometimes even aerial maps, to be perfectly honest, aerial photographs, because you can start to see where sinkhole's there if you can get a fine enough image. So it would be, it could be a project like that. It could be, as, I wouldn't say a large stretch, I don't know, to be perfectly honest, but if you had an area of concern and you wanted to pursue a project, that would probably be a reasonable scale to do that, because you can take those larger soil maps and target the areas that are likely to have karst, and then drill down to what you find there in terms of developing mapping.
And so I was, as I was reading your definition, so eliminate injury to citizens, damages to structure, et cetera. First thing that came to my mind, because District A includes, like District C includes the pipeline going through it, that, you know, counties like Montgomery or Giles haven't had something like that happen probably for decades. And I was up on the pipeline on Brush Mountain this weekend, and after all the rains, you could tell that, you know, some of the soil erosion and stuff wasn't working, but if we think about, you know, a rain that, you know, another community had, what happened right on Brush Mountain or in Catawba Valley or something like that, does this hazard mitigation plan supposed to take into consideration? You know, this pipeline's gonna be in our county for six months, you know, or, you know, forever, but, you know, the construction, the open wound is gonna be in our county for, let's say, six months. Is that supposed to be taken into consideration in this kind of a plan?
The construction of the pipeline wouldn't be, in that it's not a disaster of some kind. That is, when it is finished construction, being constructed, and it does exist as an ongoing piece of infrastructure, that would be one of the assets that would be in our data in terms of what's at risk. And so it would get added into natural events as an asset at risk for damage, and we want to evaluate, in this kind of risk, in this kind of natural hazard, what are the impacts to pipelines and those kind of facilities? I think I'm gonna stop there. I don't want to lead you to a question, I don't want to lead into a question that you have an attitude.
Sure.
So in terms of natural hazards, it becomes an asset, not a hazard in and of itself. In terms of man-made hazards, no, I'm going there. In terms of it as a man-made hazard, because things like hazardous spills are counted as man-made, we do inventory those assets, things like the Army ammunition plant also get factored in because they are manufacturing explosives there, and that's a hazard. That's a hazard that would be caused, if an event happened, that would be human activity causing that. So we identified as hotspots, for lack of a better term, we're gonna call them hotspots, but those places where that could happen, or those paths where something like that might happen if a train derailed, for instance. But at this point, we just don't have the methodology established to do the kind of hazard identification and risk assessment process that we do for natural hazards. So at this point, we're identifying what's potential in terms of assets creating a situation, and then we kind of do a little qualitative discussion of it, but we just don't have methodology to run that full assessment that gives us the kind of information we have access to for natural hazards.
So for me, and I don't know all the topography of District A, let alone District C, but some of these, you know, they're really going up and down in significant hollers, okay? This whole pipeline thing. I can imagine a mudslide. And if a mudslide actually ran into the Roanoke River and Catawba Valley, which the topography, geography is not prone for that, but if there was something like that in Montgomery County that had that potential, if we had that kind of rain at that spot, would that ever hit something like this, like be part of your plan? You know, I'm not saying reactively, I'm saying proactively.
Yeah. What can we do to mitigate? If that landslide did happen, how could we mitigate? I'm hoping that, because we anticipate FEMA developing that methodology in the near future. VDEM was working on their state plan and also wanting to get access to those kind of methods that are standardized, but that just don't exist yet. So when I think about what that would look like if the methodology did come through and we could use it to assess it, I just don't know, because the truth is, it's one hazard, and we don't do exhaustive risk assessment for every hazard we go through and we develop that ranking, and think where the dollar's gonna have the most impact. What projects can we think of that are likely to move forward and have an impact in protecting the community and its assets?
No, it's fine. I'm understanding it better, so thank you very much.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't have any questions, just want to say thank you for all your work.
Supervisor Keen?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate the information.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kristi.
Next item on our agenda is compensation and classification plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'm gonna recognize Carol Edmonds, Deputy Administrator, for a presentation. And I believe her able assistant, Mr. McCoy, is gonna be handing out some, are you gonna do it, is Clay gonna do it?
Well, now that you mention it...
Sorry, Clay.
Changed, hasn't it?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm holding up the plan here.
Sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm holding up the plan here.
Okay, let me see if I can get board docs down here. It's actually been working tonight, so I don't want to mess it up at all, so let me see if I can follow Vicky's directions. So far, so good. To get started, let me first of all mention, there are two people I want to recognize in this effort who aren't here this evening. They had prior commitments already scheduled before we knew when we were going to get here with comp and class, but that, they have done a tremendous amount of work on this project, and that's Paul Kaiser in the Finance Department and Angie Hill, the Finance Director, who without their efforts, we would not have been able to get here tonight. One of the other things I want to just say before we get started with this is probably in the last 40 years I've done or either been involved in countless comp and class studies. Sadly, I hate to admit it because it makes me sound like I'm 200 years old, but it's true. But part of it, it's, it's very much like doing a budget. You will hear from the people who are unhappy. You will not likely hear from a lot or all of the people who are happy. So just keep that in mind as we go through this. The first thing I want to talk about is what is a comp and class study? Because you hear a lot of terms and things thrown around and images about what that means and what it doesn't mean. And a full-blown compensation and classification study has a number of components. Part of the steps include looking at compensation from other peer groups, and that's where the market survey piece comes in. But there are other things that are involved in that as well. It's reviewing and updating job descriptions with current duties. It's creating a whole new pay system of grades on a scale. It's looking at how you take positions and how do you classify them on a completely new system? And then it's how do you place people on the plan? How far out in the grade did they go? And it is much more comprehensive than just studying what the pay of other jurisdictions The methodology we used, well, we tried to follow all of those components. Looking at the other market public entities regionally, reviewing and revising job descriptions, looking at compression and internal equity, and then developing a plan, pay structure and implementation plan, all staying within the funding that you all made available within the budget. Well, when we looked at all these things, what did we find? We found several classifications that, A, were paid below what their market peers were when you compared to other jurisdictions, and B, the employees had not moved far enough within the pay grade based on their tenure. So that's sort of what I call up and out. They needed to go both ways with this. The majority of employees in three classification series fell within those parameters, and that's the housekeeping series, the maintenance series, and the classification of deputy sheriff. We did find that there were certain pay ranges, pay classifications, that were found to be competitive with their current pay ranges for fiscal year 18. Keep in mind that the data we gathered is what was available most current, and that was fiscal year 18. Fiscal year 19 is starting July 1, and so we needed to keep in mind, if we're going to have a scale developed, we needed to keep in mind, you've got to think the next year ahead in order to make some adjustments based on what you believe other jurisdictions are going to do. If not, you're starting out already behind. We also had a number of departments that have done organizational changes, added supervisory responsibilities, changed the complexity of duties. There are a number of different factors that played into what occurred that we were trying to address as we went through this. And again, if I didn't mention it, the last time we did a comprehensive study across the board with all those components was 13 years ago, and that's a really, really long time to wait. So when we have all these changes together, you're going to see certain things. You're going to see people are where they're need to be. There are people who have pay ranges that need to be adjusted upward or downward, and you have people who need to move out within the pay ranges. What did we look at in terms of other localities? We gathered data on classifications, looked at job descriptions and pay ranges for 86, what we call benchmark positions. That's about 62% of the classifications on our plan. For localities that had a higher or lower cost of living range, we adjusted those based on a factor by locality. Data was gathered primarily from the following jurisdictions. They are primarily our local markets. That's where we look for people, whether it be in law enforcement, maintenance, professional series, management series or not. But not all jurisdictions have the same positions that we have. So sometimes we had to go broader to get enough responses. We had to look at other jurisdictions, and I've listed some of those down there that we may or may not have depended upon position needed to gather data from. So where did we end up? We ended up with a proposed plan with two major components. We have a classified service of both full-time and part-time and a management plan. The classified plan has 30 pay grades for full-time classified staff, and we use the current full-time equivalents. We had a full-time equivalent with a classification. We use those in order to build the new plan. We looked at, we looked at a 60% spread between the minimum and maximum of pay range with the intent that it represent 25 years. The management plan has 15 separate pay grades, but the spread between that 65% between the minimum and the maximum, again, represents 25 years of service. The spread's a little broader because you tend to have in the management levels, people who come in with experience, and with that, you need a longer spread in the pay grade in order to accommodate their tenure. The new plan eliminates what we had before as a midpoint system. And I don't know how many people know what the midpoint system is. In our case, the midpoint was not the middle. The midpoint was a calculated number that was closer on the end of minimum than maximum, and I can't tell you how it was calculated in 2005. I don't know, but it is not what you might think is the middle of a pay range. And in a midpoint system, the concept is you want to cluster people around this midpoint because that's intended to be the market, but it does, has not served as well. It fails to recognize the importance of experience, and we're not always able to provide the funding every year in order to keep it updated to, to the actual market rate.
And in several departments, it created quite a bit of compression, which we needed to address as well.
Classifying positions by pay grade. I tried to write this on how we did it, and it sounded just impossible to understand, so I tried to make an example, and I'm not sure that's still clear, but maybe it'll help us understand how, how this process worked. You have respondents to their pay grades, okay? You have pay ranges, and we looked at the minimum, the actual median of what their pay range was, and the maximum. And for all of those respondents, we drew an average. And as you see in the first table, County A, County B, and County C, we drew an average. Then we took that average and we looked at the scale that we had developed and proposed and said, okay, what is the closest to that average that we have on our proposed pay scale? And that's where the grade got placed. The position example here would be on the proposed plan in a pay grade eight. The other thing is when you place employees on a plan, you're looking at tenure, but employees have a lot of different types of service. They may have had lower level positions. They may have been in higher level positions and took lower ones. They may have been part-time and went to full-time. There's, they may have left county service and come back. There's a host of ways to look at how do you deal with tenure when you're trying to place employees on a plan. Our HR director and our finance director got together and developed a list of guidelines on, here's how we're going to look at tenure, so hopefully it would be equitable and fair to all within the pay plan. And it did look at upward and downward movement, separation of service, or change in status. And I guess as an example, I could use myself. I've been here 24 years. I'm sounding older and older as I go along here, but it certainly would not be equitable for me to get 24 years in the pay grade I'm in because I haven't always been in that. I've been in lower pay grades during that service. So what the guidelines do is adjust that to an appropriate level of service for all employees. Based on those guidelines, determine the years of service. So after the grades were determined and the number of years of service for each employee was determined, then the formula was applied. Maximum of pay range minus minimum of the pay range divided by 25, multiply times those years of service. And that's what drew the initial placement. Now, I say initial because we're keenly aware, we need to stay within the funds that we have available within the budget. In order to do that, we had to use a formula of 65% of those years of service that resulted from the formula, or the dollars that resulted from the years of service in the formula. Once placed on the scale, 65% new salary, we moved the whole scale 2%. Why did you do that? We were trying to look at next year, not get behind. No, we were comparing 18 and make sure our scales were competitive with what we believed the other jurisdictions were going to provide. So we set everything based on fiscal year 18 comparison, then set the salary, then moved the scale of people in at 2%. So what happens? 75% of the employees will receive adjustments due to market increases, change in positions, and/or placement due to tenure. All employees will receive 2%. With employees at the maximum of their pay grade, receiving the 2% as a one-time bonus. I can't tell if everybody's so excited or it's kind of like hurry up and get done with this. The next steps, and what do we do? Okay. We need approval, or we'd like to have approval of the methodology on the plan. The board's role is always to fund compensation, and you in essence have done that by approval of the budget. We need to, and we will be starting tomorrow, with communicating the proposed plan with directors, institutional officers, agency heads, and then having them communicate with their employees. We're going to need a transition policy for implementation of the new plan because we are changing from a midpoint system, and there's some language and some things that need to change in the personnel policies related to that. Again, once all said and done, at some point in time, you got to put it in payroll, and that takes some time to be able to generate that as well. And finally, we need to have some discussion about what do we do to maintain the plan and what do we do to keep it up to date? Because you don't just do it, say you fixed everything and forget about it for another 13 years. It is something that needs to have a process for review on a regular basis. And with that said, I have no further information. I don't know if the county administrator has anything else to present.
I just wanted to add a couple of comments to Carol's presentation. First off, I absolutely want to recognize Carol for the tremendous amount of work that she and Angie and Paul and Clay have done to get us to this point. We've, Carol has spent many, many hours in the numbers. We still, when we talk about a compensation and classification study, we've done a tremendous amount of work with job descriptions. Clay is still fine tuning those to get those ready to go back to the departments for review. The compensation side, which is the numbers, which we knew we needed to focus on because honestly, employees are certainly interested in their job descriptions, but they're keenly interested in what they're getting paid. So we wanted to get that piece wrapped up as soon as we could. As Carol indicated at the beginning, is it perfect? Probably not. Is it as good as any plan I've ever seen? Yes, it is. And that includes plans that, in my career, that we've paid consultants many, many thousands of dollars to do. We did have the assistance of a consultant at the beginning of the project, and they provided some valuable information to us for job descriptions, which we're using and wrapping into that. They provided some good feedback from the employees. But honestly, when it came down to developing the compensation side of the system, as we talked about it internally, it made a lot of sense for staff to do, deal with that. We knew the market better than the consultant. We were able to gather information more thoroughly, and honestly, I think did a much better job of pulling all that information together. I will tell you that Angie is a CPA and I am a CPA. We've challenged this study quite a bit. We've tried not to harass Carol too much, but we--
I am not a CPA. Then don't call me one.
Carol has a lot of experience, but, you know, the phrase always here when we do the budget each year is we challenge the base to make sure it's as lean and mean as we can. We have, we have thoroughly scoured Carol's spreadsheets, and I feel very confident that this is a very fair and equitable plan for the employees. Carol did make reference to the fact that we recognized our limitations with the, with the dollars. We did talk about the plan in 2005. A few of you may remember, we actually had another study done-- A few of you may remember, we actually had another study done, 2011, 2012. I can't remember, it was a couple of years ago.
Twelve or thirteen.
That one didn't get very far either, because candidly, when they came back with the recommendations, it was so far off the charts, there was no way we could do that. So we made an adjustment then.
Well, the one thing I'll mention about that study as well is it was a market study.
It was a market study.
It was not a full-blown comp and class study.
Yeah, thank you, that's true. What we're asking you to consider tonight is, we wanted an opportunity primarily to present the methodology. Carol walked that through several slides. She also provided you with a document that was developed called Executive Summary. Basically takes the information that was in this presentation tonight and puts it more into a report format, so you can have it to read. As Carol mentioned, we're going to review all this information with the leadership team at our leadership team meeting in the morning. I'll also be reaching out to department heads and constitutional officers and agency heads to begin to review the information with their employees. Carol will be reviewing that with the department directors to report to her. And then we'll move it forward from there.
Supervisor Demoss, any questions?
Yeah, I do have one. It's, I guess, a discrepancy, and I just want to clarify which one is correct. So I'm looking at Slide 7 and Page 3 of the executive summary. Slide 7, the classified plan includes 30 pay grades. Executive summary, the classified plan includes 35 pay grades.
Sorry, it should be 30.
Okay, I thought that's probably what it was, but I just wanted to make sure.
Well, it started out at 35, and now it's 30.
30 is the correct number, that's correct. That is correct.
I'm happy, and as I know you must be, that this has reached almost conclusion. But I did want to just make a comment about the three classification and compensation concerns that were identified as being compensated below the average, and employees are not placed on pay grades, housekeepers, maintenance, and then our deputy sheriff classifications. And I'm really happy to see all three of those showing up that way, because when we started this, I kind of had a suspicion that we were going to be lower than market on all three. I think that makes us more competitive as an employer, and shows real appreciation to employees that are, you know, in those three positions, doing very hard work, oftentimes for not quite enough. So I'm happy to see that those are going to be changed. And that's it.
Supervisor Biggs?
I'm glad you're almost finished, too, because our, you know, our employees are invaluable. They make everything run. I'm also glad that on Page 6, when you were comparing yourself to other localities, you actually compared yourself to localities that are comparable. I think, you know, that's coming to us, too, from the school system, and people don't understand, why don't you compare yourself to Pulaski, or Floyd, or whatever? But the ones that you've selected, I think, were really good, because they're going to have the same kind of positions. So that's off there. Now, help me with, let's say I'm an employee, and I'm on the pay scale, and I'm one of those employees that, when you had to put me or adjust me, it was a 2% adjustment. Am I then going to get a 2% on top of that?
No.
Okay, explain how that works, because I want to know exactly. Because I'm going to be asked that question, I know.
75% of the people will get more than the 2%, because they will get not just the scale adjustment, but they will get movement either up, or out, or up and out. I also don't, let me just say this now, you know, there are a lot of issues we were trying to deal with it. And please don't anyone leave thinking we fixed everything, because that's not the case. We've done the best, I think, that we felt like we could do to address a number of issues, but it doesn't fix everything, and it doesn't get everybody exactly where they need to be at all.
Well, and I want to reiterate that, too. One of the areas not only was below market and weren't where they need to be. We talked about housekeepers, we talked about maintenance. Deputies were a mess. And we're not getting all of that straight, we're getting it better.
Well, one of the things, when you go up and out, it's expensive. It's very expensive.
It is.
And so again, we're trying to give some balance to what we could offer. But again, we're not going to fix everything 100%. That if we do things a little differently, maybe if money was no object, but that's not the role--
It always seems to be the object.
And believe me, I know that.
Okay, and then my last comment, I heard you say something that, you know, I've been sort of on my soapbox about, and that is, you know, how are we going to maintain the plan? How are we going to take care of the discrepancies that we still have? And that involves planning, and it goes with what Craig's budget message was, planning for the future. And that, you know, and you've got to find a way to take what resources you have and make them work for you. And so I'm glad to see that we're thinking that way. I'd like to, you know, sort of expand that out to other areas, too. But I'm glad to see that part in here.
I'll make a comment to that. I do agree, just because I've said it in several messages recently about funding the future. We've spent a tremendous amount of staff time and a tremendous amount of employee time working to get to this point and making sure that we have as good of understanding of where our employees are and where our positions are that we've done in many, many years. In my opinion, it would be irresponsible to have done all this work and not keep it moving forward in the future. So you will see in my succeeding budgets that we're going to have to have a component to address that, because if not, you know, 13 years from now, some of us may not be here, but I don't want to put anybody in the position that we're in now in that we have some folks that just need some pretty significant adjustments just to get them to where they should be in the market, and candidly, where they should have been all along.
Right. I see planning for future, you know, is also going along with what are the school systems need? What are our capital needs? It's everything all together. And so I'm really glad that you put that in here. Thank you for all your work.
Supervisor Brown?
So if I understand, everybody's at least going to get a 2% raise.
That's correct.
Okay.
Everybody's going to get a 2% increase, except for those-- We have several employees that are redlined. And by redlined, I mean when you do the market analysis, they're way over the top of the market for their position. That happens in every pay study I've ever seen. You have employees, generally folks that have some tenure, you know, have been there, but they're at the top. Even those employees will get a 2% one-time bonus. Their base pay will not increase, but they'll receive a 2% bonus in recognition for the fact of their efforts, and we're glad they're here as an employee. But their pay will not increase until such time that the range catches up to their pay.
Okay. So if, so perhaps you could say what the typical housekeeper, maintenance person, and deputy sheriff's raise would be? Is it going to be 3%? Is it going to be 5%? I mean, how bad off were they?
I guess what I'd say, part of the problem with deputy sheriff is there's so many, and it's in many different places. And I would hate to quote something right off the top of my head.
I don't remember an average either.
Well, dollar amounts. See, part of the problem is, when you're at the lower pay range, the percentage may sound very high, but the dollar amount is not that significant. But we will have to get that back to you. We'll just have to send something out, because I don't want to quote something off the top of my head without checking it.
So this brings to mind the budget book that you all created before our budget season, and the charts in there for pay grades. So next year, when you publish that, you'll have the now median numbers?
Well, the budget book that will be published once the board appropriates the funding for the budget, which will be at the June 25th meeting. Is that right? When that budget, when the final budget book is completed, the new pay grades, which are part of this, will be in that budget book going forward. That is correct.
And I guess your question is the minimum, the median, the actual median, and the maximum of the range.
So all three numbers will be--
Yes, we show--
--in the chart?
Yes.
Because we didn't have all three, we had the midpoint, right?
We had the midpoint, but as Carol noted, the midpoint was not the middle. And honestly, the midpoint, and I, you know, we could talk for a while about compensation theories and all that. I understand the midpoint system, but honestly, what it created in our situation is it created a lot of compression over there, because we haven't fully funded the plan to start with. And when you make partial adjustments based on a midpoint system, everybody just winds up meshed in the middle.
Okay, so a question came to mind about, so the school system has baked into their scales 1.5% raise every year.
Just for next year?
For, no, I mean, next year, yes. But the pay scale, they changed it so every year it goes up by 1.5%.
Every year, a 10-year.
That their step plan, I think that's their step.
I don't know that all of the steps for all of the grades are 1.5.
I don't.
I don't know their step system.
Yeah.
They do have--
It was pretty close.
They have a step plan, we do not have a step plan. We have a minimum, median, down midpoint, minimum, medium, and max.
So the intent is, any new hires not to hire anybody over the maximum? Is that true?
Oh, no, we don't ever hire anybody over the maximum. Generally, when you do a pay study, if you're bringing in, if you're bringing in an employee into the system, if they don't have experience, or if they have the minimum experience for the position, we offer the minimum. We start them at the minimum. Now, department directors, and then I have some discretion as to how far up you can go. The way we've worked in the past is you couldn't go past the midpoint without bringing some things back to the board. Very rarely do you bring anybody in at the middle of the grade or higher, unless you're just fortunate to find somebody that has a ton of experience, and but--
And I think that's what we want to have some time to put together in terms of the policy revision to the personnel policies, because right now it talks about things drawn off this midpoint that we'll no longer have. And so we need to think about, and certainly that'll be what we'll be asking Clay to give us some guidance on, is what, you know, what documentation do you have people bring forward? What are you expecting to see to move them, to start them at 20% of the minimum, or 30% or whatever that is? And to put that in that sort of format, as opposed to just a number here. Here, you can go to this number. Okay, what does this number mean? It's not even the middle, what is it? I think we can have some more analysis and some more review of how that might serve us a little better, whether it be whatever kind of training somebody may come in with that would qualify them to go above the minimum, or whatever experience, or how that might work, so it'll be equitable across the board.
So coming from the private sector, you know, I can understand this, but they have a performance component. Now, my father, who worked in state government, if I can recall correctly, would just get the standard raises, just like my husband does at Virginia Tech. He gets, you know, whatever, 3% over 10 years. So do we build in some kind of performance component?
We are going to. We do not currently have a performance component. We do have an annual review for employees, but that system, because it wasn't funded to provide increases, is not-- It's one of the things that Clay and Angie and Carol and I have talked about, is part of the revamp of all this as well, is we've got to develop a performance system that actually means something.
Motivates people.
Yeah, because it's one thing to get a review and a pat on the back and a thank you, but it, you know, if we're going to do it, like we need to do it, it needs to be tied to a reward system as well.
I think that's one of the things, you know, you say steps to maintain the system. Well, there's quite a few of them, and I think that's one of them. And Supervisor Biggs might remember, it's been a long time ago, but we used to bill funds for a merit increase in the base of the budget. So because it was a cost for labor, and you needed to do that, then times got hard, and we needed to take it out, and we didn't have it anymore. But, you know, that was one way of making sure that you weren't just looking at moving the scale, but you were also looking at how to give a merit increase on the annual shift. All those are things to come.
That's what I was going to say. This is absolutely not the be-all and end-all. As a matter of fact, it's just, it's a significant first step, but it's the first step of quite a bit of work. Clay and I talked about that earlier today.
If we didn't want to fall behind, you know, in subsequent years, would we just keep up with inflation? Is that how that would go?
We absolutely need to keep up with inflation. What happened, one of the challenges with our current plan, as we talked about, it was implemented in 2005. Of course, we all know what happened in 2008, and 2009, 2010. In some years, we've come close to keeping up with inflation, and a few years, we didn't. And the other challenge is the market, especially for certain positions, has really changed. I mean, that became, when we talk about everybody getting 2%, and then some getting additional adjustments, part of that is to address compression and tenure. Part of it is to address a changing market. I mean, if that employee left, and we had to go out and hire somebody with the same years of experience and knowledge, we're not going to be able to get them for what we were paid.
There are several components that if you had the ability to do on a regular basis and the funding there, you would want to do both, an adjustment, whether cost of living, or if other people are moving their scales up, you'd want to do that. You'd want to do some sort of, whether you call it a merit, or a performance, or whatever that would be, you would want to do that as well. And you would want to look at classifications. You're not going to look at all of them every year, but each year you would have a series that you would look at. That's probably what happens in the private sector a lot more than it does in the public sector. But you do all three of those every year. And that just, it has been hard to do, as Craig said, when the bottom sort of fell out of the funding, so.
So ideally, it would be every year.
Absolutely.
So I'm thinking, 13 years ago, Craig, you weren't even here. The county government is very different. It was very different.
Mary, no, you were here.
County government, I would beg to probably say is pretty different today compared to 13 years ago.
I've been here almost nine, and it's changed dramatically in the last four or five. Part of that is related to technology, part of it is related to young-- You know, some of us are getting a little older, so there's younger employees coming into the workplace. It's changed significantly. And one of the things we talked about as part of this is we want to be a local government that attracts the best and the brightest. You can't do that if your pay steps behind people that are around you. They'll wind, we heard that same discussion with the school, so they'll go elsewhere.
I think the reality for us is there's a lot of thought that we should be able to compete directly with the private sector. Well, when you're paying a technology person $120,000 a year, and who knows what kind of bonus, we're not going to get there. But the other thing that people need to keep in mind is there is value to the benefit package that we offer. I mean, you have retirement, you have leave, you have health insurance.
We don't generally get bought out and eliminated.
Yeah, that was my last point, thank you.
Just don't hurt thunder.
Stability, you know? You tend to not have to worry from one day-- Stability, you know, you tend to not have to worry from one day to the next if you're gonna be bought out or lose a government contract or some of the other things with it. So, is there a direct balance with that? I don't know. For some people, they would say yes, and for other people, they would say no.
Well, this looks great. I look forward to digging into it a little bit more, but thank you so much to everyone for all the hard work, I'm sure you put in that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shepard.
Um, no, I, I don't have any questions, so, thank you for all your work. I know it's been a lot, and I know you have a lot to do.
Supervisor King.
You ready?
I've got a few ready. How many pages of paper do I need?
You need a lot. This, this looks really good, I mean, I appreciate everybody working on it. One concern that I had, it may addressed it and I might not have heard it, but I've talked to several employees about this. If, if I've been here 10 years, and somebody starts out and then may have two years, is this gonna compensate the 10-year person to move up a little bit more than a newer employee?
Yes.
We're gonna move it out, we're gonna do 65% of where their years of service should be based on the formula. So, I guess an answer to that, yes, it will some, but again, once you move up, you can only go so far out with the money you've got. So, it will help some, but it's not going to solve 100% of the problem.
Within the constraints of the money, yes. It will, it will greatly improve where, that's the compression issue I was talking about. It will greatly improve that. It won't fix it 100%, we can't afford to fix it 100%, we don't have the money.
But what, what I was wondering, oh, if, if each person gets 2%, I mean, it's still gonna be.
And that's, as Carol mentioned, 75% of the employees will see some adjustment in addition to the 2%. Some will see adjustments, it could be 5, 6, 7% to get that spread based on their tenure and years of service and market. Those things will push some of those out to get that spread where it needs to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Fidjikowski.
Yeah, I was looking at the, the, where you gathered the data from, the different jurisdictions, and the one that stuck out to me was Albemarle County. There, isn't their budget somewhere in the $300 million range? Didn't they just have a revenue increase of like $33 million in one year compared to ours?
I don't know about that, but their, their cost of living is higher, and that's the reason we put an adjustment on it, to take the salary ranges down some, because we would not be paying the range that they pay at 100%. And we didn't use them in everything, but again, in some positions, you can't find comparable positions, and they're one point of reference. Because they are similar in size to us. We tried to stay away from, because we know they have the, you know, combined director of finance, and some of those things, they don't compare, so we wouldn't have been hearing those. But again, in some of the technology positions and some of the others, you have to go out a little further to be able to find them.
Okay. I was gonna ask about what are gonna be the killers to this new plan, but I think that was pretty much brought up. So, I don't really, I, I appreciate all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
I, I feel dumber because I just don't understand all these formulas and everything that you're coming up with, and dividing by your birthday and multiplying your number.
Only if it's on Sunday.
We eliminated that calculation early on.
There'll be a quiz tomorrow.
Very, very, very complex, so I'm sure the, to get to that point was very complex also, so I appreciate it.
I think at the end of the day, what you have to ask yourself is, did you apply the guidelines and the parameters the same way to everybody?
So, would you have to, would you recommend that we do a compensation study more often than 13 years?
Oh, my gosh, yes.
He asked me.
I'm sorry. You think every 13 years is fine?
I think I will be doing the next one, but, like I said, every year, you, if you're gonna keep something up to date, you don't just do it and walk away from it. And every year, you keep looking at things. And so, yes, you would do a series of employee, a market survey on employees every year. Now, you're not gonna look at every employee, but you may look at IT employees one year, and the next year you look at maintenance employees, and the next year it's somebody else. And you're gonna combine that with what you see other respective jurisdictions doing in terms of moving their scales and making recommendations about whether something needs to be addressed. That keeps the scale fresher than big bang every 13, 15 years or so.
Well, the big bang every 13, 15 years stresses the devil out of staff, I'll tell you that, because it's just, as we said, there's so many things that need to be fixed. We know the resources are limited, we know you just can't run out there and wave a magic wand. You have to, you have to continually look at the plan, and as Carol said, classes each year, that's one, that's another thing, you know, Clay's over there making his list, because, you know, once this thing's implemented and rolling, it's gonna be incumbent on Clay and his folks to keep it updated and working with finance to make sure the information is available. We just, you know, this is, this has been a goal to get done for, for a couple of years. We finally got it off the ground about this time last year. Then, as I said, we had, we had a consultant that was working with us that unfortunately just had, there was some, there wasn't some good information going back and forth there. And once we realized where we were, we just said, we're gonna bring this in the house and finish it. It meant putting Carol in a closet for three months, but.
I sort of feel like Cinderella.
Well, I'm glad we had those 200 years of experience applied to this, to this issue. Thank you, Carol.
I just wanna help folks understand where the money came from to pay for this classification study. So, I, and I'm familiar with it by line scheme. How did we come up with these funds to be able to implement the classification study?
Okay, we've been putting it together over two years, fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19. And in fiscal year 18, and I think this percentage is correct, it was about 88% or 89% of the $750,000 came from savings within the base within the general fund.
When you say savings within the base, that is, and Craig talks about this, this is where you gotta sit down and look at where maybe monies are not being spent and where we can make savings to set aside for our employees, is that?
That's correct. We have, we look at a number of different things, whatever you call it, we happen to call it challenge the base, because I came from this state, and that's what we called it, so. But what it means is you go back and you look at where your expenditure levels are, you set a base target, you determine where that falls. A lot of times, it's from vacancy savings, changes in positions, not funding one-time things, and so there are a variety of factors that come into that. I can say over the years that the priority that has been given in the budget has been to identify funds to give employees salary increases. And that's what we did with this. Thank heavens, I guess in some ways it's a blessing you didn't get it done earlier because with this, we now have Megan 2 to work with, and right now, we've used every nickel of it, but about a $70,000 contingency that we're holding out here for, oops, forgot that.
Carol keeps waiting for me, or Angie to come in and go, see, found it, found it.
And one of the things is, is our employee savings, the fact that they didn't spend money on items.
That is correct.
And I just wanted to point that out as well, that we were able, because our employees save money, now we're able to pay those employees a little bit more. Thank you all to the staff, I greatly appreciate that. Is there any other questions? Thank you, Carol.
Let me see if I can not mess that.
We gotta go to the work session.
Yes. Is there a motion to come out of work session?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I didn't hear any discussion, so.
That was fast.
That's the way to do it, before they start opening.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Spad.
Aye.
Mr. Shepard.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Aye. I have to tell you what, let's take a 10-minute break, and let's come back at, actually, 10 minute or 15?
About an hour.
No. Twelve and a half, let's come back at 9:10. Next item up on our agenda is subdivision ordinance.
So, are we just looking for a motion to proceed with this subdivision ordinance?
And, and I, I checked with the, the county attorney. I do not have to read this ordinance again.
Actually, I don't recall it, so.
And so, I follow the advice of my attorney, and I can just simply say that this is a subdivision ordinance that was previously read. You're nodding your head, so I'm.
I am nodding my head.
Hey, some people here didn't hear it, though.
Yeah.
You can go on YouTube, watch it again, it's great.
It could save five minutes of meeting time.
Is, so is there a motion in regards to this?
Motion.
Second.
And discussion? Is there any discussion?
Just to clarify, the only change that we made were formatting and a couple typos that were fine, but nothing of substance.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Spad.
Aye.
Mr. Shepard.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Chair Tuck.
Aye.
Next item is new business, and the first item of the new business is regional hazard mitigation plan.
Motion.
Second.
And there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Who, who made the motion?
Mr. King, Supervisor King, and then Supervisor DeMoss seconded. And any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Spad.
Aye.
Mr. Shepard.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Chair Tuck.
Aye.
Next item is apco easement on Kipps Elementary School. Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
That was really close, I don't know.
Give it to Steve.
I was louder.
He was louder.
And, and he doesn't mind seeing somebody cry either, so.
Yeah, so probably oughta give it to him.
Yep.
This is not gonna mess up school any, is it?
No, it is, I understand it is supposed to provide more reliability.
Right, but I'm talking about if, years down the road after I'm gone, if they wanna move the school or whatever, see what I'm saying?
Or if they wanna build a fountain to dedicate it to.
Build something that's not gonna be in their way.
No, if the school indicated that it would not harbor operations, that's that school.
What happened to him during the break?
Huh?
I wonder what happened to you during the break?
No, I was just wondering, you know, if you got a right of way, and then you wanna do something, there it is, it's in your way, you can't do it. No, he had no drinks.
There was a motion, and there was a second, and there was some humor. And, and there was discussion, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepard.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Spad.
Aye.
Chair Tuck.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next item is VDOT road improvement plan for secondary roads. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Anyone? Hearing none? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Spad.
Aye.
Mr. Shepard.
Aye.
Chair Tuck.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Item D, commemoration for Dr. Charles Steger.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to add something that maybe not everyone knew, that Dr. Steger was instrumental when Supervisor Spradlin, he was chair at the time, and I was vice-chair, and we went to Dr. Steger and asked his help in securing some land to build the new Price's Park Elementary School. And took a few years, I think it took us, what, two to three years to get the whole thing done? But because of his, you know, effort to get tech involved, we were able to do some land slopping and get Price's Park Elementary built. And I'll just always remember how helpful he was when we went and talked to him about it.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Spad.
Aye.
Mr. Shepard.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair Tuck.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
County Attorney report.
I have no report.
County Administrator report.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to mention, last week was an extremely busy week as far as meetings. I think it was about as jam-packed as we've had in a while. It was good to see folks at the meeting with Virginia Tech in the two towns on Wednesday night. That was quite a nice event that Virginia Tech hosted for our elected officials and provided a great overview of their master plan for the future. I thought that was very good. We had a wonderful turnout on Thursday afternoon for the groundbreaking at the Ryner Fire Department. And for those that weren't able to make it, the Ryner Fire Department had their first fire call from the new site about five minutes before the red carpet started, so. I, I actually had, you know, I had meant to mention that earlier in the week, because it actually occurred to me, well, what happens if we have a fire call? Well, we saw what happened, everybody runs to the trucks and they go. So, that was kinda neat. And they are working full blast to get the site ready to start construction. And then we had a wonderful event on Saturday at the Animal Care and Adoption Center. I believe over the course of the weekend, we had, was it 12 animals, Carol, adopted?
Yes.
And if you were there Saturday, you know, we had a lot of folks there for the, for the ceremonial part at 11, 11:30. Folks kept coming during the afternoon. It was, it was a very packed-out day and a great event. And in all of those things I just mentioned, I really wanna thank our staff. You know, I get to show up at a lot of these things and hobnob and say whatever I need to say, but our staff that's behind the scenes, putting programs together, putting activities together, putting things in place so that everything comes off without a hitch, I just, I can't say enough about the staff. And, you know, it was, I'm very passionate about this comp and class study, you know, I am sorry that it's taken as long as it has, but we wanted to make sure it was the best we could make it to make sure our employees received what they deserve. So, that's all I've got.
First up, as far as Supervisor reports, is Supervisor Bond.
Couple of things, I, I do wanna recognize Marty's team. Blacksburg High School has a lot of great teams, and so Marty for sure and his team is going to the state championships. I'm not sure quite how the tournament actually occurs, but a lot of people forget about the spring sports. I know that the Blacksburg High School boys tennis team won regionals and are on their way to state championships, and I believe the girls tennis team is also, and I give kudos to not just Blacksburg schools, but I'm sure Christiansburg, Auburn, and Shawso schools have teams participating, I would expect. We have great sports in our schools. In addition to attending all the activities last week, I also was brought up to the pipeline on Brush Mountain on Sunday morning, when there wasn't any construction going on, to see not just the devastation, but it was clearly, it's, it's just so saddening to see. But I made it a point to go walk on the path and like, you know, those pictures of quicksand kinda thing, and I was gonna be engulfed pretty soon, so I got off the path. The mud is pretty substantial, and the soil and erosion, netting or silk, whatever it is, is doing okay, but not enough. Like, some of the streams are getting a lot of sediment, not just right where. not just right where those preventative screens are, but even like hundreds of feet down the streams. So I realize that, you know, I'm kind of this watchdog for my district just because the pipeline is hitting my district first. But I also realize that Supervisor Fidzikowski is probably going to get, you know, he's going to get it pretty darn soon because it's already up Paris Mountain. I don't know if it's come down Paris Mountain, but it's incredible. Pipes lined up in Catawba Valley and lots of big equipment down in Catawba Valley, just a couple miles from the Cheese Factory, which is the crossroads of Luster's Gate and Harding Road in Blacksburg. So if anyone is interested in seeing the devastation and the construction site, it's an easy, quick jaunt from Blacksburg down Harding Avenue up Catawba Road, two miles. A fair amount of my constituents are calling me as they're driving to town from Giles, some friends from Giles County that come and work in Christiansburg, call me often enough in the mornings saying that pipeline trucks are parked at Pandapas Pond. You know, so I've been working with the Sheriff's Office to make sure that things are moving along and tire piles are picked up and not collecting mosquito, you know, stuff. It's really pretty tough to see. I also took the time to sit down with our Treasurer, Richard Shelton, Friday afternoon as a follow-up to a meeting with him towards the end of our discussions when we were debating whether or not we were going to eliminate the Treasurer, Commissioner, revenue or not. And in the meantime, I also, prior to that, talked to Kevin. I'm going to get his last name, it's not off the top of my head, but one of the Treasurers that came to speak to us kind of midway through, who works for Roanoke County, to understand more about how he runs his office. So it was very enlightening. So I look to share some of that information tonight when we talk about it during, I'm assuming, Chair Tuck's chance. That's all I have.
Let's see, Supervisor Shepherd?
I have no report.
Supervisor King?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to the groundbreaking. It was real surprising how many people we had there. And invite Craig and Chris, if they like to join the Fire Department, they look good in them helmets.
I think you need some glasses if you thought we looked good.
And one question. How come Ms. Carol don't have a report on here? I'd like to hear her report.
She talked a lot of...
But I would like to ask and see if we are going to send Richard Ladder to see if he's going to bid out the county money or not.
And I guess at this point, I'm happy to bring it up. I know this is second, and I don't...
Well, I was going to give you the feedback, but I haven't had my chance yet.
And so I'm happy to do that. I know Sarah, I guess you said met with him Friday. And initially, that's what we thought was happening when Sarah was meeting with the Treasurer. And so I'm anxious to hear what the Treasurer has to say. And so if you want to go out of turn and make that portion of your report and then we can come back to it, that's fine.
Oh, okay. Well, my report sort of answers a couple of different things because I was also asked by our reporter from the Roanoke Times about what I thought about, you know, the Treasurer's responsibilities too. So let me just, I sort of wrote this out so I could read it and I can let you know, you know, if you have any questions about what I got. But this is what I have. It is my understanding, after talking with our Treasurer, Mr. Shelton, who had also talked with Heather Hall, that the contract with Union Bank goes through May 11, 2020. It is a yearly renewable contract for a period of three years in order to get the interest rate of 1.5%. The years cited were fiscal year 2017 to 18, fiscal year 2018 to 2019, and fiscal year 2019 to 2020. If the county decided to not complete the three-year period with Union Bank, Union has the option to charge back the difference we received in interest. This is known as a clawback clause. The difference would be from 1.5% to 0.5%, so they would be able to take back 1%. The Treasurer thinks this amount could cost the county hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest that would have to be reimbursed to Union for breach of contract. The Treasurer emailed us some information on April 13. I don't know if you all remember, it was a whole big packet of stuff. But included in that information, there was a letter dated May 3, 2017, from Heather Hall to Mr. Brizendine of Union Bank. And Craig had signed it, and Marty had signed it. And it specifically talks about the clawback clause. So after discussing this with Mr. Shelton, I see no need to send a letter to him since I would not support negating the contract and paying back interest to Union Bank. Further, I wanted to add that I've been asked constantly about what is my opinion about what the Treasurer does. And so I wanted to refer us back to page 127 of our budget document. And it states, "The Treasurer is an elected constitutional officer responsible for collecting all county revenue, submitting financial reports to the state and county, authorizing county disbursements and cash management, which includes managing the county's bank and investment account," end quote. So if you think about the current Treasurer, he's been elected four consecutive times to do this job. Each term is four years. He's elected by the whole county, where each of us is elected by a district. And so evidently, the people in our county have had confidence in him as Treasurer. So I personally think, this is my personal opinion, that it would be beneficial to all concerned to continue to work together for our citizens and to find ways to facilitate and build positive relationships between our constitutional officers and our board and staff. Now, in addition to that, I asked Richard, I said, can you tell me a little bit about, you know, the interest rate? You know, what have we gotten? And so I specifically wanted to know with the 0.5%, what we got from May 2016 to April 2017? And that was $289,939.39. When we went to the 1.5% interest for May 2017 to April 2018, it went up to $852,057.05. So basically, during that first 12-month gain, we gained an interest over 500, well, it was $562,117.66. So that's how much it meant for us to go from the 0.5% to the 1.5%. So I don't know if that helps anybody with the discussion or not, but those are just sort of what I pieced together from talking to Richard. And then I wanted to answer the question about what I thought about what the Treasurer does because I was asked that question.
I'm really shocked about the whole 2020 thing because if you look at his email that he sent us, he told us the contract was up in 2019.
Well, can you tell Marty what that...
So was it, well, I guess my question, because you referred to that specifically. Was he just didn't know when the contract ended?
No, it's still, it's an annual contract.
It's an annual contract.
And so there is no breach. Breach is a wrong word. And what happened was, he was negotiating with the bank on the renewal in 17, I guess. And the bank said, "We will increase," this is my understanding, "we will increase the interest rate from a point, from a half to one and a half, if you will agree to do a three-year renewal." Well, I looked at the contract and it doesn't give us authorization to do a three-year renewal without having to rebid it. And I said, "You can only do one-year renewals. That's the only thing, that's the only option left under the current terms of the agreement." And so then the bank came back and said, "All right, but if we're going to give you this one and a half, then you're going to agree, then we're going to put in a clawback where if you don't go three more years, then you'll lose part of that interest for whatever year you don't do." And that's, and it says in there, "You guys determine whether it gets renewed every year." And so what it comes down to is a business decision whether, if you do put out a bid, will you make more or less based on what you would lose if you don't go forward with what you got? If that makes sense?
And so I'm looking at his email that he sent out, April 13, 2018, which specifically says Montgomery County Contract Number 14 through 20 and its renewal through May 11, 2019.
Go down to the next one.
Right, and so that's a current renewal. And so that's the headline.
Go down to the next one, Chris, where they talk about when they changed over to the 1.5. That's the one that has the reference to the clawback.
And if you look at the letter that he sent with us, the contract will now expire May 11, 2019.
Right.
So...
Unless renewed.
Unless renewed.
There could be one more renewal.
So we can renew it one more time and have it expire May 11, 2020?
Right, and then you're through with the whole thing.
So after the article ran that Yan wrote, I got contacted by banks. And one of them was National Bank of Blacksburg, which is asked to look at the contract. They actually do banking for eight localities. And when they heard that there was no interest on the first eight million, it was described as being very generous compared to what they do. And their highest interest rate right now that they're providing is 1.65. But they were surprised by that. I had also reached out to Roanoke County. And they do something very different than us. They have a bank account, really, that just pays the bills. And they keep that bank account very, very small, as small as they possibly can. Then, do y'all remember them talking about the pool money that you get interest on? They keep 10% of their money in that to transfer it into that account on a regular basis. And then they have two investment accounts that they utilize to generate as much income as they possibly can for their citizens. And so then, as they go through, they transfer money into the pool. If you'll also remember when Kevin spoke to us, he said, "Within 24 hours, you can get the money. Sometimes if you make the request early in the morning, you can get it that afternoon." So in piecing that together, I guess I'm looking at this, and I'd be interested to see it go out to bid. It may have this clawback provision, but at least it's, we would know because even if it has a penalty, if there are better things out there, better things to do it. And, you know, it seems to me we have a duty to our citizens to ask. Now, that's the way I look at things. Because we asked after 11 years, there wasn't a tax sale, and something happened. And we got a tax sale. Now, hopefully, we're going to find out how that's doing. I'm hoping that we're going to get an update from the Treasurer to see where we're at. We're approaching three months. But to me, when I have a bank president reach out to me, and we have provided them now a copy of the contract that was signed, saying, "The MBB," and there is a collateralization issue with local government money. And if you'll remember, you have to have a higher collateralization than if I put money in the bank. But MBB wants, would like our money, but they're not, they have an obligation to their eight current localities, and they have to be able to match that collateralization. So they wanted to look at that agreement to see if they would be interested in putting in a bid.
So this is different than when they didn't want to do it in 2014? And they never contacted Richard, they contacted you?
Well, they contacted me because they read the article and were kind of surprised about, frankly, the no interest on the eight million dollars because that's not something that they do. And so that spurred that, and part of it in regards to that. Mary, if you remember, staff even presented, there was a very short window for that RFP. And while they had one of their employees working very diligently on it, there were a lot of strings attached to that contract or that RFP. And they're trying to see if they can match up that RFP to what we actually signed the contract for to see if they were actually similar. Because there may have been a contract that was signed that was kind of different than the RFP request that went out. And so that's one of the things that we're going to be, or they're going to be taking a look at to see if they can competitively bid on our business. But that's just from that one newspaper article. Todd remembers banks approaching yourself.
Yep.
And when this issue came up before. Marty, can I ask a question since this, the clawback provision? So if we don't renew this, that clawback provision in regards to interest, is it all the way back to multiple years?
It would be one year.
One year.
Because right now, it was a second of three years.
And, okay. Like I said, for me, knowledge is power. We gained a lot of knowledge when we had a bunch of different Treasurers here. And Kevin with Roanoke County, I believe, with, our socks were knocked off by the way that they're doing it just next door to us and the way that they're moving their money. And now that pool is up from 1.59% to 1.9%, and that's the 10% money. Their long-term money at the pool is even greater than that. So that's the kind of low-hanging fruit that I hope, that our citizens expect us to be looking for.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
So just easy math, and Marty, tell me if I'm wrong. If, let's say, National Bank were able to give us 1.65, and we'd have to subtract the 1%, which means that we're really only making 0.65 for the first year. Am I thinking about this correctly?
If we had to pay the clawback back?
No, you would be made, yeah, you had to pay back 1%.
Right, so that first year, we would be making 0.65 versus if we waited the extra year, no clawback, regular RFP?
Well, and it should be mentioned too, that if we wait the extra year, we will have, and I'm, you know, Richard has spoken publicly that he doesn't intend to run again. So if we do wait the extra year, we would also have a new Treasurer in place.
I'd also like to speak to some of the conversation that I had with Kevin in Roanoke Valley, Roanoke County. He does have an account, he has several banking accounts. And part of what he does is keep one or two million dollars with about five or six banks just so that delinquencies can process quicker with those banks. So if you think about it, one to two million in five or six banks, that's approximately seven million dollars in those banks. But then he has Sun Trust that he uses, of which he has seven million dollars that he gets absolutely no interest on. And he says it ranges between seven and nine million, which is right at our eight million. So this is not unusual. And the reason why banks do that, and I'm not saying National Bank wouldn't do that, okay? Or would do that, I don't have any idea. But the point is, is it's not that unusual. And the reason why is because either you pay fees or you don't. And in the way that their contract is written, and I'm assuming the way that ours is written, and I could be wrong, but the bank makes money on holding that seven million dollars of their money, which then pays for the fees that they would normally stroke a check for if they were getting credit for those seven million, you know, interest on that seven million dollars. So that's not too unusual. And then he talked about the investments, the short-term investments that he does have, and the interest rate that, and this is what he told me, 2.18%. Now, 2.18% isn't an extra percent compared to 1.5. So there's unlimited ways of being a Treasurer, as far as I can tell, just having one, two data points now, Mr. Shelton and Kevin up in Roanoke County. What I understand, when Richard came 16 years ago, the interest that he created compared to the previous Treasurer was more than 10x. So he's been... So he's been trying to do everything that he can to do right by our county. With regards to the tax sale, I don't want to dig up old stuff, but the way that Mr. Shelton told me is that he wanted to go with Tax many years ago, and wasn't given the go-ahead to do that. Now that he has been contracted with Tax, they have gotten money already, and they're moving right along.
I want to clarify something, because he was never told he could not go forward. He was told, you have a company that will do it for free. And we, and he asked us for an allocation of additional funds, I believe it was $15,000. And he refused to go forward with the tax sale. And we did not allocate the $15,000. I believe Mr. Brown was the chair at that point in time. And so you had someone willing to do it for free, and then the group that he was going for wanted 15 grand upfront. And so I understand that Mr. Shelton may disagree with how that took place, but it is all on video. And that was offered to him at that point in time. And so if he wanted to go forward, he could have gone forward at any point in time, at least while I was on the board. I don't know, when Mary, before I got on the board, did y'all ever tell him he couldn't go forward with the tax sale?
Well, see, Marty was involved in the tax sales then.
But at that point in time, did you ever tell him though, that you couldn't go forward?
No, because he and Marty did them. They did them on a consistent.
Right, but I was going to say, that would have been, I've been on the board, I guess, one of six years, but so that five years prior to that, the board never told him he couldn't go forward with the tax sale. So that's half of that time. And so I, and you had mentioned, don't bring up all wounds, but that's the reality, and that's the factual basis for it. And I'm a big believer in facts. You know, I would like to explore to see what banking is available.
But see, I maintain that it's Richard's constitution, that's his duty, his responsibility. So why are we trying to do his job?
We're not trying to do his job. We're just asking if he'll put our banking out to bid.
But we're talking about people contacting board members, banks contacting board members and all. If it's his job, then he's the one that they should be contacting. He's the one that should be looking at it.
Well, the thing is, if we can get better interest somewhere, I mean, you're talking maybe 100, 200, $300,000 more interest. We all would like to, well, I shouldn't say that, but, you know, we want SOR officers in the schools, that would help with that. School buses, county garage, I mean, we need to look and see where we can get the most money. I mean, I don't know why that hurts his feelings, us asking him to do that.
What is the point of asking him to do that when we really have, you know, it doesn't matter what we ask him to do?
It don't matter. Really?
Does he have to do it? If we send it to him?
No.
No, he don't have to do it.
That's right.
But I think it's our job.
We should send him two letters.
I think it's our job to try to get the most we can for the taxpayers and citizens.
That, to me, that is just so, that's common sense. You would want to do as much as you possibly can. Mr. Shelton is a good man. I have no issues with him. But I agree with Supervisor King that he has taken this personally, and now he has been insulted by our recommendations. Our recommendations aren't to insult him, they're to get the maximum amount of money for the county. Just like Supervisor King said, a couple hundred thousand dollars would go a long way on issues that we dealt with this year and are dealing with this year. So I think it's very important, and nobody should get their feelings hurt, especially people in politics. You're going to get your feelings hurt, and people aren't going to agree with you. We don't agree with him, so we'd like to ask him to do it. He can refuse, he's already told us he can refuse. Let him refuse. What makes me upset, and I am upset right now, is the fact that here, I thought we could make this letter, make our case, and now we find out we're going to get penalized because we're locked into something, and we can't get the best deal for the county. When I listened to all the treasurers that came in here and spoke, I was impressed by the way they did their offices. And I'm not trying to take anything away from Mr. Shelton. He did what he thought was the best. That was his decision. I don't have a problem with that. But if we can do better, why wouldn't we ask? Why wouldn't he try? But now, everything's changed, because now we're stuck, and we all got to put on a happy face.
Well, I think it goes back to how you communicate your requests, number one. And number two, if we had really, I guess, then, you know, Sarah and April and I, and I don't know who else went, but tried to make the attempt to go and understand the issues and understand what's going on, well, it's a lot to that. I mean, this wasn't just, you know, for me to put this together, I had to really understand, I had to ask questions. It wasn't just like a one-time deal. And I think that, you know, I guess, and I keep saying this, and I guess it's sort of like talking to the wall over there, but communication and how you handle things and relationships with your other folks are, they're just critical. And Steve, I agree with you, we all have had people after us as, you know, leaders and politicians that, you know, we don't maybe like what they have to say to us, and we try to do the best we can. I think Richard has tried to do the best that he can do, and I think maybe if the message had been brought about in a different manner, or like, maybe a couple supervisors, you know, went and just sat down and talked and said, hey, you know, our board's interested, but that's not exactly what happened.
And it's too late now?
I think so.
Kind of looks that way to me. It's too late now.
Well, the point is, is that even if we went out for an RFP today, which I'm not recommending because of the clawback, you know, we're actually going to be doing more damage than We could go, but it takes about nine months to actually switch to some other bank. So we've got a lead time that we have to take into consideration for when this next year ends. So.
What I understand about this, the bidding that has gone on in the past few years, and I know nothing about banking, is that Union Bank has been good to the treasurer, and he's, they've been good to the county, and they're easy to work with, and there's a good understanding between them. And that's great, that's really great. But I get the impression from what he has stated in the newspapers and what he has stated here in this room, that other banks, just not interested. What does that mean? Does that mean he contacted them, and they said, no thanks? He contacted them, they didn't reply? I don't understand what that means, but it just seemed just very frivolous. And Union, we've worked with Union for years, and they're just, they're easy to work with. I see the benefit of that, I really do. But that's not getting the most money for the taxpayers. And that's where the rubber hits the road, and that's what we all should be concerned with.
There is something to be said to building relationships with your banker so that you get immediate response, you got their cell phone numbers, and they're actually taking action with what you need. And I asked Richard about that, and that's how he conveyed it to me. But also to talk to your point about how, and Mary or Chris, somebody else can speak to this perhaps better than I can. The last time that they did the RFP.
Was, it's December 5th, 2013, and there were four banks.
And after a round or whatever, all that was left was Union and National Bank, and then National Bank pulled themselves out. So you have a choice of one at that point in time. It doesn't mean that.
But what about the other bigger banks, Sun Trust, and I forget?
They didn't put anything in.
Well, but there was a reason that they didn't put anything in. If you go back and look at that, when we asked him about it and the staff reviewed that, there was a narrow, very narrow window for the RFPs. But I, and I brought the letter up, and it, to me, was very simple. I said, and y'all all saw our draft, it was respectful of him, we asked him to consider it, put it out to banking. It didn't, and wasn't insulting to him in any way, shape, or form. It was to simply ask him to put it out to banking. And that's what we, the goal was. There was an ask to put, a request to put it off. And that, I agree. Then there was basically another request to put it off. And I agreed to reach out. Now, because that came up in multiple different meetings, and Yan's president, I asked him and said, look, would you hold off on writing this article until Mary reports back? And that's why I was hopeful that would happen. But that's what we were looking for. And like I said, I even pulled up the letter in regards to the contract. And so we've got a debate about the buyback, and I think that's a legitimate thing to look at. But we're seeing interest rates go up on a daily basis. We need to be looking at this. I think that the knowledge was very helpful that we gained through that information and seeing how other treasurers work. I don't know where we're at. With the new information in regards to the buyback, I'd like to look at that, and the clawback portion of that. The letter I received from Richard, and I pulled up the latest emails from Richard, and the February 23rd letter, Union Trust, which he is, it says that it's going to expire on May 11th. That's why I started wanting to look and say, let's do this in advance, so we can get our banking out to bid with plenty of time, that nine-month window to do that. And so, Todd, you asked a very good question, are we going to send the letter or not? And for me, I want to look at that because I want to consider it, and I didn't, I was presenting new information this evening. I know it was my idea, but I'd like to think about it in another meeting. And I apologize to anybody, but to me, I want to make sure I make informed decisions. For me also, it has nothing to do with Mr. Shelton. It has, in my mind, if I see somebody doing wrong, I have a duty to try to help them, or I become complicit with what they are doing. And so I want to see us put these out to banking, to bid. Am I disappointed that in 2017, it didn't go out to bid? Absolutely. Am I disappointed in the clawback provision? Yes. Am I disappointed that we didn't utilize a pool that we're a part of that is giving better interest rates than we're currently getting? Yes. So those are all things that I'm looking at and trying to move forward in my mind. So is everyone all right if we take this up in the first meeting in June?
Can we have it as a, maybe as a work session in that meeting, or somewhere on the actual agenda?
That's fine. And normally, when we send the letter, we look for consensus. That's why I brought it up in the board report, is for consensus, because that's all we need for a letter. But this is, issue has become bigger than I ever hoped it would be. I thought it would be a simple letter and a request that we would ask of a constitutional officer, that we ask all the time of different constitutional officers to do this or that, or to the school board, even though they run the schools. We said, hey, we hope you'll do the mobile hotspots to the sheriff's office. We asked for, you know, to give us a report on the body cameras. Those are all things. So I'm happy to put it in a work session if you'd like.
Could we have a report where we're at on the delinquent tax sale?
It seems like that would be about three months since March, on the delinquent tax sale and where we're at, to get an idea. Does anybody have a problem in asking, sending a request, asking for an update of where we're at?
I know that when I was talking to him about that, there's some milestones. So maybe the next step would be for him to tell us those milestones instead of us, you know, asking to meet with him before the first milestone happens. So he was talking about, you know, the letters went out, they're starting to get some of the money. And then the next step is like the lawyers doing more research, you know, and things like that, so.
I would like that to be in the letter form, just asking for an update. He can give us whatever update he's at.
Or maybe could somebody from Tax come in and give an update? Or would it?
I mean.
I just think, because they're the agency that's doing it.
I don't understand the letters, what you're trying to accomplish with letters, when, for the schools. All we did was ask them.
Yeah.
You know, for any other constitutional officer, for the sheriff, all we did was ask him, you know.
We were very good, and when we dealt with, and Mary pointed this out, when we were dealing with negotiations and talking with people, we wanted to make sure it was in writing. And for me.
That was at the turn of Blacksburg.
Okay. And so I think it's important, and if you'll recall, there were some discrepancies about what has happened in the past. Letters have a way of resolving discrepancies, because this is what is in writing. And it makes it very easy to look back at and say, this is what we requested, it's in writing. And so that's an important aspect of having that, in my mind.
I don't know if I'll ever agree in writing a letter. It's just a difference of opinion.
Yeah, it's a different way of communicating.
With our constitutional officers.
If we want an update on the tax sale, we just have, the regular way at work wouldn't correct us, contact the treasurer, and he would come in and present it, or the firm that he had, you know, why not just? I just don't know why we have to make it so that there's a layer. Why can't we just communicate?
Especially when we were trying to work in together.
In a letter, communication though?
Hmm? I'm sorry.
Well, tell me, what was your thinking in regards to Blacksburg? You said that was the deal with Blacksburg. What is different?
Because we had so many issues over time. I mean, it was a long time, Chris, you know that. And so that was probably a way that, you know, what you're saying, you know, we could, but this isn't really an issue to me. If we want him to come talk, we just ask him to come talk. We want Hank to come talk about SORs, we ask him to come talk. We wanted Helen to come and talk about probation, she came and talked. What is, what are we trying to do?
I'm just using, and I guess at this point in time, is there, I'm looking to see if is there consensus, just to write him a very simple letter.
Send the letter.
All right?
No.
Okay. And so it looks like there's consensus to send a very simple letter.
From four people.
What's consensus? A majority?
Yes.
But my name won't be on the letter.
Well, the board's name will, because it will be an action that there is consensus. And that's.
I think it should be stated in the letter that four of the seven supervisors wanted the letter sent. Because I'm not for sending the letter. I'm for talking directly to a person.
And everybody, so I have no problems in saying that four of the supervisors asked to, in writing, and three did not, including the part of the letter. And if we want to just put specifically everyone's name on it in regards to it, that's fine. Okay? All right. Now, I believe we went out of turn at that point in time, and Supervisor King was there. And so that gets us to Supervisor Fitchell.
Yay!
How you know I'm done?
You are done.
Okay.
I had my first school safety and security meeting today, and I thought it went very well. We opened it up with watching the video on the safest school in America, which led to some good conversation. We talked about door locks and various safety hardware and training, and something that I learned was that the state actually mandates the lockdown exercise or the lockdown drill four times a year. I didn't know that. So it was a very good meeting, a lot of participation. It's a pretty big committee, it's a lot of police representation, and they have, they play a big part in it, which they should. And I thought it was very good. Look forward to the next one.
Good.
Supervisor Demont?
It's.
Oh, excuse me, Supervisor Pigs.
Oh, okay. Thanks for that report, Steve. I'm glad that you're on there and representing us. Okay. I wanted to add something to what Carol said earlier about benefits to the employees, because when I went by the onsite clinic, one of the employees approached me and thanked me for having the onsite clinic and how much it meant to him personally and how he was able to use. able to use it. So that's another benefit I think a lot of places don't have. And I think it's really great that we're going to be able to expand that to three days a week. So I want to make sure I mention that. And then I also would be remiss if I didn't say something about the animal care and adoption center. And what I wanted to say about it, first of all, thank everyone that, that came and I know Sarah and April and Todd came by and Amy wanted to adopt some kittens and we weren't able to get that accomplished. But Todd, if you're still, if you're still open to that, we can arrange at any time.
Of course he is.
Okay. And then along with that, let's see what I have here.
That was cool. I was just going to add, it was quite a discussion that I walked away from.
Well, Carol and I spent a lot of time in that, with the cats. We, you know, trying to decide what we should do about all those cats. But anyway, what I thought is worth repeating, I know that you guys have heard this before, that, that more than 1,500 animals that have entered the facility have found homes in the past year through adoptions, reclaims and transfers to rescues. But this is a statistic I love. The national live release rate for animal shelters is 83% and the average rate for government-run facilities is 78%. Montgomery County's Animal Care and Adoption Center has a 96% live release rate, making us up there in the nation. And that goes to Eileen and all her staff and all the volunteers. I mean, it is a destination place to go. And I also wanted to give a shout out to Jennifer Harris, who worked really hard to promote it, the celebration and get people there and did a lot of behind the scenes work, cutting up programs and everything else you were doing, running in and out there. So thank you for all your help. And I think that's all because I gave you my report and that's it. Thank you.
Supervisor Demonts?
I really only have one thing and it is just, it's a reminder. It's fish fry season, so I have to give the reminders.
Oh, yeah, we got it all.
So get your counters out. The fish fry, the Mount Tabor Ruritan Fish Fry, the next one is scheduled for June the 9th. That is from 5:00 to 7:00 PM and that's with Happy Hollow String Band as our musical entertainment. And all of my ducks have lined up, so I should be there serving coleslaw. Come see me.
Okay.
Get extra?
I might give you some extra coleslaw. I can't say much about the fries or fish, but the coleslaw.
April, what time did you say?
Five to seven.
Five to seven. Okay, got it.
And those are huge events. I mean, we generally have between 500 and 700 people that show up. So they're fundraisers, all of the money that we raise goes right back into organizations that are working in the community.
It's good fish, too.
And good fish, yeah.
Good fish, too.
It is a good.
So, are you done?
I'm done. That's all I have. Thank you.
A few things. I think we addressed the letter issue in great detail and we won't need to go over that again. I apologize that I wasn't able to attend the animal shelter celebration on Saturday. I was the cook for my family reunion.
Well, don't worry, Chris, we've got dogs and cats ready to go to your house.
Well, you know, I don't really need more. I've just got to train the ones I have. But I do have a rescued cat and I do not have a rescued dog anymore, but I've got a dog that I, needs training. But that being said, the hour has gotten later than I thought it would be and so this meeting is adjourned.